Great. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today. And with that, I will pass it along to Emily. Emily, I think you're muted.
Sorry about that. How many times do we do this that we forget to mute and unmute? So thank you, everyone, for joining us today. We're really looking forward to having this discussion. These are strange and challenging times for many reasons, but when it comes to municipalities and running processes that are such so important, such as town meeting, it was very, I know, sort of intriguing, interesting, maybe, on how municipalities sort of met the challenge of doing their spring town meetings and whether municipalities tried to go the virtual option or in an in-person socially-distanced way. So today, we're here to highlight two of our municipalities showcase how they sort of met the challenge of embracing the technology at the moment and really doing this really important endeavor and doing it virtually. So thank you, everyone, that is joining us. Before we get started, before I introduce the panel, I definitely wanted to find out who was in the room. So first, I'll ask if you can please share in the chat, could you please share some of the communities that are in the room? We would love to hear who, what towns, and whatnot are joining us today. And then we have a quick poll. All right, so I see Needums here, Walpole. All right, we have some Dedham, Cambridge, Foxborough, Stowe. So I definitely think that there's going to be a few folks that are from MAPC region and outside. Great, CTPS from the MPO, Watertown. Great. And so I'm going to do a little bit of a poll also to understand how you managed or facilitated your town meeting. So Yolando, if you could put our first poll question in. Oh, someone's from South Hadley. That's great. Hang on. Thanks, David, for being here. All right, so our first question, if you are attending from a town, did you have representative or town meeting? So are you coming from a municipality that has representative or open town meeting? We definitely wanted to get a sense of sort of who was in the room because obviously representative town meeting is easier and a little bit easier to manage when it comes to virtual. All right. So I think Yolando, you can stop the poll. Great. So it looks like most of the people in today's webinar have a representative town meeting. And then there's a second question there. Yolando, if you can go to the second question. So how did you facilitate your spring town meeting? And the second question is, if you are planning for a special or fall town meeting, how are you planning to facilitate? So for the first question, how did you facilitate spring town meeting? Understanding that obviously there are some folks that may not have done that yet. And then if you are planning for special fall town meeting, how are you planning to facilitate it? All right, can you show the results? Great. Yes, so I think a lot of folks went the route of going outdoors back in the spring, and I think the weather definitely was suitable for that. And two, how are you planning? So there's more of a percentage looking to go virtual. Some people are still thinking about the outdoors option. Most folks are undecided. Great, thank you. So with that, I think I'll ask one more question before we have the panelists share their experiences. I think there's lots of questions when it comes to how to do virtual town meeting or what are the possibilities. And certainly, our two towns could talk 60 minutes worth each of all the details. So I actually wanted to ask you, the audience, what questions do you have for our panelists? What are some of the things that you came to this webinar looking or hoping to learn more about? So if you can take a moment and again, place in the chat some questions or some topics that you were hoping would be covered today, it would really help us narrow down a little bit. And we will have a Q and A after the panelists speak. So here, my first question was who was in the room? And so if people could please place in the chat maybe a question that they brought today. You know, what is the burning question when it relates to how to do virtual town meeting? So people asked about the platform. How did you assure the town meeting members voted? Yep. So there's also, is virtual option open for town meeting? Open town meeting? So we can talk about that. How do you ensure members, so the identity and ensuring that the folks that say that they are who they are in order to participate? How did you deal with amendments to articles? How did you handle voting? How did you count the vote? How did your meeting occur over multiple days? Great. So we're just getting a little bit of a sense here. And you can continue to add in your questions as they come up, and we will address them further in the Q and A. Wonderful. All right, I'm going to move us forward here. And I'm just going to present the two communities that we have. So we have the town managers from Lexington and Stone, Jim Malloy and Robin Grim. And we also have the IT directors or specialists from the town, Sean Duggan from Lexington and Trish. Trish, how do you say your last name? Just want to make sure I get it right.
That's okay. Just like it sounds, it's Shropshire.
Shropshire, great.
I married into it.
Yeah. And so also from Stone. So we'll have Lexington start first, and then we'll go to Stone. So if you could answer for us, how did you do, you know, how did you approach your virtual town meeting? What are some quick lessons learned that you can share with us? And how are you thinking about doing it differently? We'll give you about 10, 15 minutes, and then we'll go to Stone, and then again, we'll go into Q and A. Thank you.
All right. All right. So do you want me to go ahead and just do the presentation that I, and then respond to some of those questions?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Great. All right. Can I get this? Okay, so let me get myself organized here. So Lexington was the first town to hold a virtual town meeting. And so we had a whole bunch of decisions that we had to make from the very beginning. And it was in early March that we made a commitment to go forward with the town meet, a virtual town meeting. Our town council believed at the time that the state statute was broad enough to allow us to hold a virtual town meeting without the need for additional, an additional special act. The state law says that town meetings may be held in one or more locations within the town. And so he felt that that was broad enough to allow us to say that we were holding in all the different homes of all the voted town meeting members. But bond council had a different opinion on that because we had some borrowing articles. We had to listen to both our town council and our bond council. And so our town council and our bond council got together, and we decided that we would go the route of doing a special act. And so from the very beginning, as I said, the select board, the town moderator, our management staff, and our appropriation committee all committed and with the idea of moving forward with a remote town meeting. We just needed to figure out how we're going to do it. And so we started in early, actually, we drafted the legislation in April. Excuse me. And in early May, it was introduced and went through the Senate very quickly. And then it sat at the House for about a month at a time when we were gearing up because we were planning, 1st of June, we were having our virtual town meeting. And so nothing really happened for a while until the very end of May. And then things moved very, very quickly at the beginning of June. And we did get a bill passed, but it didn't happen quite fast enough for us. So at the very last minute, we had to have some additional language inserted into the bill that would be retroactive to any town that started their town meeting within 15 days of the governor signing the bill. And so it sort of has nice clear language. I had to read it about five times to make sure we understood that it said what we thought it did. But it, what they inserted for us at the very end was this section 17, which says, "But doesn't, this act does not take effect at least 15 days prior to the date of a scheduled representative town meeting. Based on the state of emergency, the actions shall be, that are substantially consistent, shall be ratified, validated, and confirmed." And so we did actually start our town meeting before the bill was passed. And we also had, on top of that, we had a special town meeting article that would have confirmed the validity of any actions taken. And then if all else failed, we'd also file the motion for injunctive relief in Middlesex Superior Court, so you can have the courts confirm the legality of our remote town meeting. And that was actually, received a amicus brief from the Attorney General supporting our motion for injunctive relief. Then just for some of the technical stuff, because this is, at this point, was more important to most communities now that it is legal to hold a virtual town meeting. For the video platform, we decided on a Zoom webinar platform with a 500 attendee option. And then for the voting platform, we used the same system as we normally use for electronic voting, which is called V voter from Option Technology. They very quickly developed a online platform using the same technology so that for our town meeting members, it looked exactly as it did when they would normally go to town meeting. All of the voting worked just the same way. And then for the debate platform, one of our talented Lexington Select Board members developed an online web portal, which provided a secure login for all 198 members of our town meeting. We mailed a ID and password to each one of those through the US mail so that they each got it individually. And we also had photos of each one. But really, the secure part of it was the validation on the password that was individually mailed to each town meeting member. So then, one of the things that obviously took a lot of effort was ramping up for the town meeting. Our select board moderator, our town meeting member association president, and a lot of our town staff worked to get a lot of information out to all of our town meeting members. We developed a dedicated remote town meeting website. All presentations for town meeting were pre-recorded. Videos that we all did using Zoom and then just recorded them like this meeting's being recorded. And they were posted on the site weeks in advance. We held training sessions by precinct for all nine precincts, starting on May 12. Every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, plus we had one makeup session. And then we had one separate training for the select board and one for the appropriation committee. And then we held a mock town meeting on May 27. We eliminated all pomp and circumstance. We didn't have any, we normally have the high school band in. We do all kinds of presentations. We recognize new management staff. We didn't do any of that. It took a team of approximately 20 town staffers to help manage telephone lines, manage presentations, read questions from the public to make this all happen. And it came across pretty seamlessly, but it, there was a lot of behind-the-scenes work because there are people who, in all of our communities, are technologically strong, and there are some that are technologically challenged. And like a lot of communities, some of our town meeting members, our oldest is about, was about 97 at our town meeting. And so you have a whole range of people, from people who are in their 20s till people that are in their 90s. So results, we had our June 1 night jitters that we started a town meeting when it wasn't quite legal yet. We did have 190 of our 198 town meeting members present. Nobody recalls that high voter turnout in a recent history. We held our first, and which turns out it was the first ever in Massachusetts, online town meeting. We went through 27 articles, including a large consent agenda, the budget, general water, sewer, and recreation, our capital plan, two home rule petitions, CPA projects, and a land swap amongst others, including a major zoning change. So a lot of people were very patient throughout the entire thing, including our town moderator, who did an excellent job, very calmly walking people through issues. When we did have an issue with somebody who was trying to do the town meeting on their iPhone while they were out on a walk and lost connectivity or something, being able to take their votes by a voice vote. People were very curious. A lot of them had a lot of fun with it. I think some of them were maybe having a glass of wine at home. And many were ready and eager to participate to ensure that the town's business was carried out. And so we had a very successful annual town meeting that was virtual. And just on some of the questions that were, that popped up initially, how we handled voting, like I said, we used the V voter from Option Technology, which for us worked great because it was the same system that everybody was already used to using. So if you're using a system and that particular vendor has an online option, that was certainly the smoothest way to go. Part of our system that one of our select board members put together was a registration system to make sure that we could handle the secure registration and voting to confirm that we actually had our town meeting members doing the voting. And part of that, our typical setup is we have a yes microphone and a no microphone and a question microphone. And so he set up the same exact type of a lineup where people could queue up in front of any of those microphones. And from any of those, someone could make an amendment. And so we handled amendments just like we would at a regular town meeting, where somebody would offer an amendment, and we would take it up that way. We did ask for people to submit it in writing as well, so we were able to get it in writing electronically in real time. And we did hold it over a number, over multiple days. It took us about, I think, four days to finish our town meeting. And then as far as it's, whether it's an option for open town meeting, I'd have to go back to the legislation. I think there was a provision for open town meeting. They were trying to deal with that towards the end. And it's really what slowed down the representative town meeting legislation. And they did put something in there, but I don't recall what it was, actually. So that's basically what we did. It took, it took a huge effort upfront to make sure that all our town meeting members had the right technology and to deal with all the different types of technology, whether people were using a PC, a MacBook, or an iPhone, or an iPad. It all showed up differently on everybody's screen. And so we had to walk through a lot of that, and that's what a lot of the training was for. So you have to be prepared to do that type of training. For our fall town meeting, one of the things we're looking at doing is integrating the voting and the registration process a little bit differently because for our annual town meeting, you had to register for both to make sure that we had the right security. And the selectman who put it together has now modified it so that it would just be one registration. And so that's our biggest change that we're making between the annual and the fall town meeting. Our fall town meeting is scheduled for October. We will probably begin some additional training programs or retraining programs sometime in mid to late September. And I'm happy to take questions as we move forward.
Great. Thank you so much. We're actually gonna, that was a great recap. And I think we're gonna recap how Stone managed their town meeting because they did it a little differently, right? So I think everybody has different ways that they approach this. And so I just want to hear from Stone, sort of the overview. And then there's some good specific questions that are starting to come up in the chat. Thank you. So I hand it over to Robin and to Trish.
Thank you. And Jim, first of all, I'm going to curse you all day because all I have going through my head is, I'm just a bill, and I'm only a bill. So I'm flashing back to my childhood and having sort of a 70s moment. I usually have 80s moments, but now I'm having a 70s moment, thanks to you. And Lexington, just by virtue of his whole, of Jim's whole presentation, was probably a little more organized and a little more prepared going into this. We were a little more on the seat of our pants because we were planning on trying to do an in-person town meeting of some sort because we do have a much older population, and we do have a lot of people who are not tech savvy. And so we, I believe it was through May, were working toward a live town meeting, an in-person town meeting. And we were looking at different options and how the technology would work if we were in five different rooms in a high school, or could we do it in different buildings like elections? And so we were chugging along with all sorts of plans. And then the moderator started to hear from people that they did not want to come. And so we very much at the last minute patched together a virtual town meeting. And instrumental in that were the lawyers. No question Lauren Goldberg was critical in that because we had not been following the legislation as Jim had been doing. And because we just knew the legislation was giving us some wiggle room and some options, but we hadn't really been following what we could do in 100% virtual. So I think it was May, Trish, that we really started cranking together. And we were aiming for, I think, like June 20th or 23rd. And then Lauren said, please back it up another week. You're going to need another week to work with people. And that's what we did. And so on the fly, Trish, and she can answer the technology questions, worked to pull together the technology to make this work and also the training for our town meeting reps. And on our end, on my end with the board, we worked to trim down as best as we could our warrant. It originally had 50 some odd articles on it, and we just knew that wasn't going to fly. So what we did is we pushed off some zoning articles, things that didn't have major financial implications upfront. One of the biggest challenges was deciding what to keep on for that meeting and what to push off and dealing with the question of, sort of philosophically, what do we have as a chance to pass, A, because of the COVID financial questions, but B, are people going to be reticent to pass something controversial in this forum if they're not sure that their voice can be heard? So I think for us, communication and interaction in Stone was critical. We have an extremely vocal population, and we had a very, very controversial sewer project that we needed to get through, and we did not want to delay because of MAPC grants and all of that. So we were much more in a position of, okay, what are we going to include in this? That was sort of my role, and Trish was on the technology role. So for us, it was narrowing. We did put together a consent agenda with the pro forma budget items. We put about four or five of them together as like a consent agenda. They were still listed as separate articles in the warrant, but we dismissed some things, and then the board worked to sort of coordinate a consent agenda of sorts. But those pro forma articles, the stabilization funds, things like that, we put them all together. And then we went from there, primarily focused on the budget. One thing we did do was some pre-meeting, some Zoom pre-meetings. And I would like to do more of those. And what we did was we invited people to come hear presentations on the two largest articles, which were the budget and the Park Street Sewer Project. And my Executive Director of Developmental Service ran the meetings on the sewer project. I ran the budget meetings, and I believe my two union contracts, I did preliminary meetings included in that. And that was helpful. And these preliminary meetings were basically Zoom meetings. I did a PowerPoint presentation of the budget and of those union contracts, and then opened the floor for questions. The goal there was to really limit the number of questions that would be heard on the floor because we knew that if we started hearing a lot of questions on the floor, we'd have a problem. The other thing we did agree to restrict, and the moderator was wonderful in this, was the back and forth between or amongst the town meeting reps. A lot of times, we're supposed to have questions and answers and then discussion. But a lot of times, those questions start aiming at each other. The reps start aiming the questions at each other as opposed to whoever's presenting the article. I think one of the key elements in this is that your moderator has to control how that discussion happens. If your moderator loses control of that, you're going to have chaos. In a very weird way, the virtual meeting was almost easier because that back and forth could be controlled by a moderator who'd say, nope, muted. And he actually had the courage to do that, which I think took a good bit of courage. And depending on your town, a lot of courage. But I think critical in all of it was those pre-meetings. And I would like to, if we do a fall town meeting, do several more of those. I had about 30 people, I think, at my two meetings. But a lot of those questions that were going to be somewhat controversial in my budget positions, I eliminated some restructuring I did. Those more controversial questions were weeded out because the people who really had a deep interest showed up at those meetings. And so we were able to weed out. Some people still ask the same question because they kind of wanted it to be heard, and we're always going to deal with that, and that's okay. But if we were able to eliminate even 40 or 50% of those questions, it made the meeting much more functional. Ours ended up being two nights. Trish, I don't recall how many articles. Was it about 30 articles, maybe, that we?
I think 29, yeah.
Yeah. So it ended up being a relatively substantive town meeting with a number of articles. But again, we moved off our zoning articles, and we stuck to mostly borrowing. We did limit even my capital purchase numbers. But a lot of those I didn't do just because of the virtual format. A lot of those got moved because everybody was very, very nervous about the financial situation. We hadn't seen our fourth quarter receipts on things to see where we were going to end '20 to know sort of what we were going into '21 with. That was, that was sort of a big part of the issue, too. So like I said, it was twofold issues. Part of it was a budget question, and part of it was the format. And so some things were eliminated for budget reasons, other things were eliminated for format reasons. And I think we're going to have to learn to handle that formatting better as we move forward for things like zoning articles, which can tend to be very controversial. But again, critical in that was like the Park Street Sewer article, the preliminary meetings and more of them. The problem was we had three weeks, basically. One of the things that does help a little bit is that town meeting isn't subject to the open meeting laws in the same way. And so I could do sort of these last-minute Zoom meetings and plop them up there. I tried to give several days' notice, but there is a little more wiggle room on that. So that does help a little bit. So generally, I mean, I would defer on all the technology. Chris can talk, Trish can talk a little bit about the general technology and what she did for training of the town meeting reps. But overall, from my end, it was creating a manageable warrant and working with the board on prioritizing that warrant at this point. And we're going to have to learn to have it a full warrant if we do this going forward. And secondly, the preliminary meetings to start answering some of those questions and get them off the main floor. And those meetings were recorded, and then we had them rebroadcast over our local cable network. And we encourage people to go watch. I also opened up for any written questions or comments people might have had in advance and was happy to do any written responses that I could. And then as much as I could, put those out there publicly as well. So I'll turn it over to Trish if she wants to add anything on the technology side.
Hi. I did want to add a couple of things because I think we were different from Lexington. And I loved hearing about their experience because I felt like they were so organized and I feel had so much more than we had as far as organizational processes went. First of all, it can be done, and I thought it went really well. My anxiety was way up here. I was really nervous about it. But I felt like we had back-to-back town meetings. We had an organization, excuse me, an organizational meeting first. So it was just for the town meeting members to vote in new town meeting members. So I did that one through a Zoom meeting and then broke them up into rooms so they could talk amongst each other. They really love that. But then when it came to the regular town meeting, we used webinars so we could kind of shut them down and have more control. They missed the back and forth that they had the opportunity to in organizational. I thought that was kind of key. But it was so much better, the webinar, because we had more control. Now, unlike Lexington, I didn't have 20 staff. I kind of just had the MAPC support staff helping me out. So that was phenomenal that I had that. So if we do end up doing this in the So if we do end up doing this in the special, the moderator and I worked on this like every day for quite a while. So I think it's kind of all in your prep work. I had like trainings three times a day. I had quite a few people with flip phones. We rolled out Chromebooks because people didn't have computers. I went and picked people up and brought them to the town hall that didn't have internet access at home. So I think we had some different challenges that probably, you know, other towns may or may not have. We do use a clicker software turning technologies, but I thought that would be a little too involved for our constituency group to flip over to another website and do voting. So I just used the poll voting that like we did at the beginning of this meeting. The only limitation to that is there's a 25 limit. But that's per event. So when we had our town meeting, we were fine. And some of it, we just did hand raising for attendance, just to count things. What were some of the other questions? Oh, so debate and people that wanted to speak, they would raise their hands and that would keep a list of everybody in order, which was great. We also used questions and answers. And Robin, chime in if I'm forgetting anything, or Emily. We had two support lines, which MAPC ran for me. They were phenomenal. I think that was pretty much it.
Yeah, I think Trish hits on something. Our IT staff is Trish and her assistant. That's all we have. So MAPC was critical in this for us. Or else we, we just, we needed that, particularly that technical support on those nights. Having somebody there dedicated to technical support was so important because people started panicking if for some reason something went wrong technically. And they were afraid they would miss a vote or their vote wouldn't be counted. And on our two-thirds sewer vote, every vote really did count. So some of the things that are, you know, you get, you know, 90% positive on, you're okay. But I think that that, I can't emphasize enough that immediate technical support is so important for people to know that they have that was, was absolutely critical for, for just comforting people a little bit, particularly the people who are used to dealing with, you know, flip phones. And we just couldn't with the two-person IT staff, even with the assistance of the clerk's office and in my office and anybody else, we just could not do it without that outside technical support.
Yeah, it was huge. But it can be done. And now that I've done it, I feel like if they, if they said, okay, we're gonna do the meeting in October virtually, I wouldn't be stressed about it because we've already been there, done that.
We just will have more time to organize and actually plan. I mean, we, we kind of did this in about three and a half weeks. And again, with more time to plan, we would definitely have more of these articles addressed ahead of time and deal with it that way.
One more thing I wanted to, oh, I'm sorry. One more thing I wanted to mention. I think with our constituency group, they love to see themselves on TV. And I think at first, when we were doing the webinar, we were gonna promote, it was gonna promote them to a panelist. So you'd be able to see them speak. And I think I did that maybe three people in and then we stopped. And I really felt that that cut down, like I think that was a good thing. I think the moderator did a great job of, you know, making sure that nobody went off when they shouldn't have on a tangent or anything. And the mute button did come in helpful. So I think there's, there's a lot to be said for being able to control. And I know I probably shouldn't even use that word control because we do want people to participate, but just to make it flow smoothly. The other thing is we, we got it done. It was, it was the 29th and 30th and we had to have it done by midnight on the 30th. We were pretty close to that bell going off. So with a huge article passing and our budget passed. So I feel like, you know, we might not have been in that situation had it been a live town meeting. And that's all I have to say.
Yeah, there's so many great questions coming in. Thank you. You guys have hit a lot of different things. I also wanted to give Sean an opportunity to talk a little bit more about the technical side in Lexington and sort of address some of the questions that have been coming in about the voting, the platform. And especially, you know, how did you ID voters?
Well, everyone signed in through the system, through the online portal that, that the select, select board member Joe Pato put together. And I just, I wanted to start off to say that it was an integral, an integral piece of this was the leadership from Jim, two of our select board members, Doug Lusante and Joe Pato, as well as our moderator. And so without them leading the ship, I'm not sure that it wouldn't have gone as smoothly. But they, they did a really good job of, like Jim had mentioned, being really patient with town meeting members that had technological issues and were able to guide, guide them through that process. And again, as Jim had mentioned, that there were various devices. You had iPads, iPhones, PCs, like everything, anything that you could think of, there were, it came up and they say, well, how do I, you had an issue all the way from minimizing a web browser all the way up to I don't even know how to use the voting system, even though it'd been used before. So they were really good at making sure that that went smoothly. And, and Joe, Selectman Pato, had done a really good job of simulating the exact experience that they were having at a town meeting. Right from the second that they walked in the doors of Cary Hall where our town meeting is held in person, they, they really simulated that. Minus the pomp and circumstances, everything went through as if they would. They were able to debate back and forth. They would still caucus, the appropriations committee and the capital expenditures committee and the select board would caucus on their own via text or phone call. And then they'd come back and make their recommendations. So it really was a near identical experience, except for being in person, having the pomp and circumstance, which was really, was really important for making people feel comfortable during the process. And I think that probably contributed to why there were so many people that participated versus prior years. In terms of the, the training piece, I wanted to add that that isn't our entire, there were, most of the staffers were from the IT department. But we did, we employed people from the recreation department, from the human services department, myself in the town manager's office, our management fellow. It was really a group effort and there were about seven to 10 of us that were actively, one of us controlled the Zoom controls, one of us was changing the screen, the shared screens. I was taking in the public, public comments. So what we had done to allow members of the public that weren't town meeting members to be a part of it, we, we had them submit an online form through our website and then I would log them all as they came in and I would read them. I was the person that read them verbatim what they had said. So I worked with the moderator to decide which public comments were read when. And there was actually a controversial article that we had on one of the town meeting nights in the first week. We had, we did Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then it went to the following Monday. I think this was on Wednesday, we had an article on a firing range that was pretty controversial and it fell on the heels of a protest against police violence in Lexington that same day. So it was just really an unfortunate timing of that. But so the article ended up going back for reconsideration. And through the, the comment portal, we had received near, just about 100 comments from people. And so being able to moderate that, it was only open for 30 minutes of debate. So thankfully, we didn't have to read every single one, but we, we did make sure that it was, again, simulating that same experience that you would have if you were in person the same way. And a lot of the things that we did here were actually better because people are in, being in person versus being remote, it allowed more participation. It allowed the public, we got more public comments than we typically would during a town meeting. And, and so there are a lot of positives to take away from it. But that's about all I wanted to add on my end.
Great, thank you so much. There's so many good questions that came in. And I think you had answered some of them. As it relates to the legislation question, I believe the legislation allows for remote town meeting during declared emergency. However, between representative and open town meeting, I just wanted to ask my government affairs Representative Leia Robbins, I'm pulling her in from MAPC, can you address the open town meeting question? Because I think that is something that people might be toying with, the idea of doing that.
Awesome. Okay, I was like, well, how do I unmute? So right now, the legislature, the legislature, when the, reached the governor's desk, it only allows for representative town meetings to go remote. It does allow for open town meetings to reduce the quorum size during the declared emergency. So there is that current flexibility allowed and both open and representative town meetings have the flexibility to hold their meetings outside of their municipal boundaries if there's not a suitable location. You don't even have to say if there's not a suitable location, but that, that flexibility is granted. Right now, I think it would be interesting to know if open town meeting communities after this discussion are more interested in a remote town meeting. Just as a data point, there are, the legislature has decided to continue holding sessions through the fall. So there is always potential that legislation can move to be responsive to the pandemic. So definitely open to hearing more about what folks are considering.
Another question that came in was on the articles. And also, I think Ellen, it was Ellen, I think, that had a great question about how you sort of managed that. Let me see if I can find the question. She also, so she wanted to know had either of the town used consent agendas previously as well? And if so, did you add a lot more? Ellen also asks how many town meeting representative members are in Stoughton? So I don't know if you want to take that first, Robin.
We, we, in my experience, we typically are not used a consent agenda at town meeting. Those pro forma articles were all voted on individually. So that's the first time that I'm aware of and I actually liked it. Sometimes there were just crazy questions that come up on those that tend not to be terribly relevant. And one of the other things was that people did have an opportunity, even those little preliminary meetings, if there were things in the consent agenda that they had questions on, they, they felt that they could sort of touch base with us in those informal preliminary meetings. So it took a little bit of the fear away, but I would love to use those again. I mean, there's really no point in not on some of the things that are just absolutely pro forma with. We did pull like, so on our stabilization fund, for instance, our Cedar Hill Golf Course tends to be controversial. We did not put that in under a consent agenda, even though other stabilization funds did go under. So we tried to be very cognizant. The board really tried to be cognizant of areas that people would feel disenfranchised. If we lumped them all together and somehow they felt that they would have to stand out by asking a question on one of those or felt uncomfortable. So I think the consent agenda is a great thing, but I also think you have to be very aware of your constituency and what particular things you can put under there and not alienate people or have them feel that by pulling it out or asking a question, they're somehow gonna create havoc. So I, what, Trish, what's our number? About 180 for reps? Or 160, 162?
Yeah, I feel like it might be a little bit more than that. We had, we upgraded to the 500 license for webinar. So I think we had like maybe 350 people on.
Right. But I think our town meeting rep number is 180 or so, a little over 180.
I can't remember, but it is under 200.
But we did have a significant presence. I mean, we didn't even have to consider relaxing our quorum.
Yeah, actually, someone just asked if, in the case of Lexington, was there also more participation or than you had expected? Or even I think the participation rate?
So, yeah, we, we, like I said during the earlier presentation, we had 190 of 198 members. We typically have about 160 that show up. So we had a extremely high turnout. And just going back to the previous question, we typically do use a consent agenda. But it's usually only a handful of items that fall into the consent agenda. Given the format that we had this year, we had over really 40 articles that were included in the consent agenda. And what we did was all the parties agreed that if the select board, the appropriation committee and the capital expenditure committee all, all agreed unanimously that it could go on to the consent agenda, then we put it on the consent agenda. We had one article that two of the capital expenditures committee members were not in supportive and that came off of the consent agenda. So we had a process set up to make sure that, you know, the three groups felt that all of the things that should go on to the consent agenda went on unanimously, including the budget. And really because in previous year, the budget was approved unanimously in about five minutes. And so everybody was like, well, why don't we add the budget to the consent agenda too? And, and really any town meeting member, it only takes one can remove it from the consent agenda. So luckily for us, that did not happen. So we have used it. And I think we may find that we use it more broadly in the future too, because the process worked pretty good where it expedited a lot of our town meeting. And our town meeting typically can go two and a half months. So if we can knock off a month, that's a good thing.
And Jim and Sean, I think there's a very specific question on options tech. People just kind of wanted to know a little bit more. And sort of their charging, did they charge a premium for online voting? Sort of how did that work out?
They, they did charge, I saw that question. They did charge a premium. Didn't have a chance to look it up, but it was about $4,000 or $5,000 on top of what we've paid them in the past.
I think people definitely also want to know that when, when, when things are safe to come together, would your municipalities ever consider, you know, advocating to keep a virtual option for people? Was that something that you think would maybe benefit town meeting?
You know, a lot of people really liked it. Because they could be sitting at home in their pajamas with a glass of wine in their hand, I think. But a lot of people like the in-person banter that happens too. So I could see it would be great if remote town meeting was made a permanent option for local communities. But I would think our annual town meeting would probably be done in person. But it would be nice to have the option to do a small, special town meeting as a remote town meeting, because I think it would be a lot more convenient. And the other thing that came out of it was during the discussion about having a remote town meeting is, and I said this earlier, that a lot of our town meeting members are older. And one of the reasons is that they're the people who have the time in their lives to devote to a town meeting process, especially in a community like Lexington where the town meeting go on for quite a while. And that if, if there was an option for sort of a hybrid where some people could show up in person and some people could vote remotely, we, we thought we might see a more diverse membership in our town meeting where we would have some younger people who might have small kids at home. And they don't necessarily have to get daycare or evening care, a sitter or something. So they go participate in town meeting twice a week for two and a half months. And so I think, I think that there's a value to having a conversation. Because I think it could greatly diversify what town meeting looks like and also provide a lot of flexibility and also maybe help for those small, special town meetings or fall town meetings we may have now and then.
I forgot to mention, thank you for that, Jim. I forgot to mention MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council's role in this is our government affairs did a lot of advocacy to support municipalities. And even, you know, relaxing some of the legislation and really just pushing for some direction during, you know, back in the spring. So that is something that our MAPC Government Affairs is also available for. So if there's anything that you all feel like you need for your town meetings moving forward or any procedures during this time, please feel free to use our Government Affairs. And our community engagement team has some special funds set aside to support municipalities in this moment as they try to figure out how to use virtual engagement, not only in their town meetings, but also in other, other types of meetings. So we do have some support that we offered a couple of communities and Stoughton took us up on it and we helped with the IT there. But certainly I wanted to do a shout out to Brookline, who I heard lots about, how well their virtual town meeting went. Milton, I think Danvers as well. So these are some other peers for you to connect with. And I did want to, again, could just end with this question. Any sort of last comments on whether you would do this, you know, even during non-COVID time? And any other either lessons learned or advice for municipalities that are right now trying to decide whether or not to go in person or virtual for the spring and fall? And all four of you, please jump in.
I would, I would, as far as advice goes, I would do a lot of planning upfront and make sure that you do, what we did is we did an inventory with all of our town meeting members to make sure we knew what type of technology they had. And we had a backup plan that if somebody didn't have any technology, we would give them a loan or laptop or something. And to make sure that you set aside enough time to do enough training. So that by the time you get to the actual big show, it goes pretty smoothly, that people have gone through. It goes pretty smoothly, that people have gone through it a couple of times. There's still going to be glitches, but it did help eliminate some of those. And then, um. Plan on having enough staff on hand. And a, and a call in phone line with some technical people to be able to help some people walk through any issues they may be having. Because the last thing you want to do is have someone have, have an article held up because three or four people can't get to the voting app. In time or something like that. And we, like I said, we had about 20 people of our staff members that were participating one way or the other. And they ranged. Throughout all of our departments, but for the most part, they were our millennial employees, a lot like Sean. Who's on this call, because they tend to be more technologically savvy. They just are. Fact of life, they're, they're digital people. And, um, all of them did it voluntarily. We just put out a call and a lot of them just volunteered. And, um, we, we recognized that they dedicated. I'm going to guess nine, 10 or 12 evenings of their own time. Most of them are salaried and so they weren't getting paid overtime or anything like that. And so in exchange, we did, um, grant them all an additional vacation day, just as a show of appreciation for their participation. So if you do get staff to participate, um, give them a little pat on the back because who knows, maybe we'll be doing this in the fall again. Want people to volunteer again, right? And so those would be my, uh, suggestions.
So I'll, I'll, I'll jump in on that. I need to give Trish an extra like vacation year for her efforts on this. It, it, Jim's absolutely right. Preparation, what we did not have was the time to do that. We were so behind the eight ball to start. We didn't even have emails for all of our town meeting reps when we went into this. We did not have a list anywhere. Nobody had compiled, I mean, just chaos of other things in town that had not. What happened is this showed any weakness that we had in town, just was like on steroids by the end of this. Because it, it, it illustrated any glaring gaps that we had. And so as we started to try to get like, just reach out to our town meeting reps, we did not have a complete email list of all of them. That, like just the most basic of things. So Stoned unfortunately is behind the times on a whole host of things and we're working aggressively to catch up. And this forced us to catch up very quickly in some areas. Preparation, i- i- as Jim said, if we had had another three or four weeks, we would have made it smoother. I think going forward, like Trish said, the anxiety will be less because we know we can pull this off. But preparation, explanation to people, little things like they didn't understand why we did, you know, some, some roll call and, and, and hand raising. Uncertain things. They didn't understand. We only had up to 25 votes per night, uh, per event. So just explaining that to them, well, you know, why are we wait raising our hands for this? Well, no different than sometimes we do a voice call. In, in, in real, you know, in the live town meeting. Just expl- explaining those little things so that people don't think there's anything subversive going on. We live in a, a, it's sort of a suspicious, we work in kind of a suspicious town. So if you, if you, you know, change one thing, there, there might be an agenda behind it. And no, there, there's no agenda, except we're figuring out how to do this. And, and we only have 25, you know, votes per event. So I think explaining those things upfront to take away the suspicion and the fear is critical. The preliminary meetings, I would definitely do more of if I could. I think that that would be really helpful. And, um, and again, that reliance on your IT staff, the, and, and your town staff is just tremendous. And MAPC's assistants, technical support was everything. We couldn't have done it without calming people's fears that they could get to somebody that night by phone, traditional like telephone if they had to. And say, I need help. It was mostly virtual, but, um, that, I think. The more technical support we can have, the more telephone access we can have would be better, all of it. So, yeah, preparation.
And Sean and Trish, if you could leave us with any comments, last closing comments?
Sure. Uh, Jim covered most of it, but I do, I do want to go back to his point about how moving forward. We are moving towards a more digital age. So this is an opportunity and not one that we chose to have, but one that was thrust upon us. But it showed that we do, that we can operate in a, in a virtual format. And typically government tends to be on the slower ends of catch up, catching up on things, but this proved that it is possible. And I hope that there are a lot of takeaways that, that there are definitely takeaways that we have, but I hope the other communities were able to learn. Um, and then hopefully adapt so we can expedite some of the things that will put us closer towards a 21st century, uh, government.
Yeah, I have to agree with that. I think that even just from having training sessions and having a lot of time. Having these classes and teaching everybody how to use Zoom. That I was getting comments from people, oh, you know, I can have a, a FaceTime now if my daughter comes over with her iPhone. Or I can use my iPad and, and FaceTime my grandchild instead of having my neighbor come over and set it up. So I felt like not only did we prepare everybody for this virtual meeting, we also maybe. Help them in their personal lives. Um, that felt really good. So, yeah, I mean, either way, I'm up for whatever Stoned wants to do for the next one. I too will, I've already started, um, reaching out to personnel here to help with the next meeting if we go virtual. So I am going to tap into. All the millennials and then some at Stoned. So, yeah, I'm already working on the plan because I feel without a plan, you really won't be able to pull it off. As good as it, as it should be. But one more thing I wanted to say. We, we do, the rep from turning technologies who we do, um. Electric voting reached out to me and, and said. You know, if you guys are thinking about a virtual town meeting, I'd love to help out with that. So we had a demo with our town clerk's office and with the moderator and. Then I also looked into the online polling, just so everybody knows, you can run reports from that online polling. And it gives you all the information. Once a, once a person registers. All the answers to all of their questions come in those reports. So I felt that that was a no brainer choosing that instead of going with the, um, with a clicker software. As our constituents would have had to change screens. And believe me, it was just easier for them to have everything up on one screen. And that's it. Thank you everybody for coming.
Thank you, everyone. So we are at time. You were both such a wealth of knowledge. I want to really congratulate you. We are so impressed with the efforts that you did. Um, and as Trish was saying, I, I think this was really a service that you provided your constituencies. Um, I think as a community, it sounds like both of you really leaned into that learning curve. And I think there's more benefits here than even, um, accomplishing town meeting. It sounds like even your constituents feel a little bit better about the use of these technologies. And, um, hopefully that will, um, you know, impact other parts of their either civic life or their, their personal lives. So thank you so much. I think there is a call for maybe doing a second series of these, uh, on open, um, town meetings. So maybe I'll, I'll see if there's a couple of folks that want to have a brainstorming session together around how that's possible. Thank you for joining us, everyone. We are going to be posting this and forwarding this to everyone that attended so that you can share. Have a wonderful and safe afternoon. Thank you to the speakers. Bye bye.